Test one, two, test. No way. Is it?
But everybody else is.
What are you suspecting? What are you gonna do?
Bless your heart.
Hello, hello.
Yeah, wasn't supposed to do that. I have a little cable on it.
Good evening. We're gonna call to order the 245th session of the 10th council at 6:00 PM. Roll call, Mr. Doyle.
President. Miller. Hiddla. Stransky.
Present.
Taylor Burbs.
Present.
Waterman. Williams.
Present. Okay, um, I need authorization to excuse, uh, Councilwoman Miller. Support. All right, it's been moved and supported. Okay. Roll call.
Hiddla. Stransky. Taylor Burbs.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter. Yes. Six yeas, no may.
Okay. Any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilwoman Waterman, then Proton Carter.
Okay. I think, um, item number three and four should just be as, um, received because I think we're going down a path that we don't need to go down and we've dealt with that. And I don't know the reasoning why anyone would think to bring this back up. So I'm asking for that to be removed. Also, we were supposed to be receiving some information as it related to, uh, the CARES Act Fund and as it relates to, um, DPW funding. Once we get that information and it's all in council members' hands, then we can move forward as it relates to that, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Proton Carter.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
I have, uh, uh, it's on public comment, but I have one of my staffers just gonna make a public announcement. Uh, expect to put the, uh, a couple things, cause my district is mainly Hispanic and they need to have a broadcast out so they know what to do about their eviction process, illegal aid and things. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, this is a study session and the weather is very inclement. Um, we do, we do have, uh, uh, item number, uh, six with, uh, the Drain Commissioner. I would like to move that, uh, above, uh, public comments. And then, um, let's see, what else do we have on here that is pressing? Um, I think that's, uh, it. Uh, is there, uh, movement support? To amend the agenda?
Sir, so I'm clear about the agenda. Were you removing all items except for?
I'm, I'm moving those up and then if the weather is still bad, uh, after public comments, then we need to decide what we're gonna do as a body. Cause, uh, Bagley Street is almost un-driveable right now.
So two wasn't here either.
Right.
Six. So the motion is to remove three and four and move six above public comment.
Also, Mr. President, if I might, I'm not understanding what this number five is all about.
What, um, so number five, uh, Mr. Uh, Bob Wan asked for a point of privilege to speak on, um, on what happened with the Phoenix Center, but I didn't want, uh, anybody just to give public comment and the council not be able to respond to it. So I, so that's why it's on there just as discussion. If there is no discussion, then we can move on from it.
I don't see any, well, he said what he said. So far as I'm concerned, there is no discussion for me, but okay.
Okay.
All right, so you need a move and support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported.
No, you need a move and support.
I have to move and support. It's been moved by Stransky. I need a support.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing now roll call.
Hiddla.
Are you, uh, a simple note suffices?
Stransky. Taylor Burbs.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter. Yes. Five yeas, one day.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now we need, uh, a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move. Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yeah, I really have a concern.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Peter.
Well, my concern is we have a request to approve 980, uh, contact the Amendment County Sheriff for the second additional deputy sheriffs that the city has been asking for. If we keep putting this off, next week, we're gonna turn around number 17. Next week, we're gonna turn around and we're gonna say, oh, we need to bring this back to the Finance Subcommittee to discuss this some more. Which is, we're already putting the deputies off until December.
Excuse me.
We need to keep this moving. We started this.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Peter, just, just for clarity's sake, because I don't know if you heard, we didn't remove any of these items for the agenda at this time. So item number 17 is still item number 17.
Well, this is why, uh, you're asking for discussion. This is why I'm voting no. Because this is the reason why I am voting no. We keep asking for it and we know that this council is going to all agree, cause nobody ever speaks up their feelings except for me. Thank you very much.
I'm very confused, but okay. Any other discussion?
They're going to. The only thing you're not.
Okay, seeing now roll call. On approving the agenda as amended.
Stransky. Taylor Burbs. Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter. Yes. Hiddla. Five yeas, one day.
Okay, agenda is approved, which brings us to item number six, uh, which is an ordinance to repeal that exists in Article Two, uh, from, uh, the municipal code. Uh, we have people from the Water Resource Commission here.
We go. Thank you. Um, Jim Nash, Water Resource Commissioner. I'm here with Amy Pluff, uh, who's in charge of the water, uh, systems that we operate and maintain. Um, I'm gonna let Amy kinda describe this and tell you what is going on and if we have any more questions, we have a gentleman, George Davis, who can ask the, uh, answer the legal questions. And of course, I have, uh, Julia Ruffin, my community liaison here tonight. So, Amy?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Nash said, we're here today to present the proposed, uh, updates to the water ordinance. So the ordinance is the set of rules and guidelines that we follow to work on your behalf in the water system. The existing ordinance was developed during the time that United Water operated the water system. Since that time, we have more experience in your system and we think that these changes we're bringing here today will provide a better level of service to your customers. Uh, with the proposed ordinance, you've charged us with the responsibility of carrying out the rules that you've established. So many of the changes in the ordinance are related to, um, regulatory, um, items such as, uh, the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality used to be the item, the regulatory agency for the drinking water systems. And now it's done as the Michigan Department of Great Lakes and Energy. So a lot of changes were made in those type of things. Um, so if we go through, um, you know, some of the key components of the ordinance itself, um, you know, we're always working toward a quality water supply. So what we wanna do is provide a safe and quality water supply to all the residents. One of the items is hydrant usage. So what it is, is we wanna limit the usage of hydrants to those folks that are trained to properly operate them. Cause they can damage a hydrant and then it won't be available for a fire or it can cause a main break. Uh, talks about, uh, plumbing requirements. So what it is, is having the folks that are trained to work in, in, um, plumbing to ensure that quality workmanship and materials are used in our customer water supplies. Uh, talks about, uh, water use restrictions. So in some case, there was a large scale emergency and we needed folks to limit their non-essential water use, such as grass watering, uh, but would provide that, that requirement. Uh, one of the more important items is water main construction. So what that does is when a new water main comes in, part of the development, it requires that they use the same standards and guidelines to protect the water system that we use in other places so that that main remains um, in service for many years to service our customers. So the proposed standard is, it ordinance is the gold standard. It updates and enhances the current ordinance. And, uh, we're requesting your approval this evening. Please let me know if there's any questions.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Waterman.
Thank you. Um, this is basically a housekeeping item.
Yes.
And you're just trying to bring the pain up to, it's, uh, okay, that's all I mean. And I read it and I just felt that it was probably a housekeeping item.
Yep.
Okay.
Very good description. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I have a question. Hey, Mr. Nash. I don't know how to, how to really, uh, phrase this question. I asked you, I'm having this with combination, combination sewers. And they do exist. I don't know exactly where they're at until we come across one. So does this ordinance we're here supersede anything that was already installed? Because some of the drawings, and thank you again for providing the information that I needed. Some of the drawings of, are showing things that really don't make, don't make a lot of sense. I mean, kinda like pipes are not buried as deeply as supposed to be. I just wanna make sure that it doesn't, this new, this new modification takes into account that anything that's already grandfathered?
Yep, yep. This is specifically for a drinking water system, so it wouldn't affect any of the sewer or any combined systems like that. So this is specifically drinking water.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I don't know of any combined system in Pontiac. It's, it's pretty much separated, um, I think many years ago. So, uh, it's, it's a separated system. We actually, um, helped you guys do an ordinance on the sewer side about five years ago? I think it was about five years ago. Um, so we're catching up on the water side now, so.
We came across a couple over by, by, over by J.C. Park on Ivy and Lawrence Street.
And they're combined, okay.
Yes. So we came across a couple when, when they were digging the streets up. And they weren't exactly to, per drawing. They were only like eighteen inches.
Is that right? Well, we can look into that. I can, I can find out more.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Nash. We'll be, uh, uh, we'll see you. We will be voting on this item next week instead of today.
And I'll be there for that too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right, so, uh, that brings us to public comment. Uh, I will ask for a point of privilege, uh, for, um, James Johnson to come give an update on the ARP funds.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for an appointment of privilege, Council President. Um, I'm just coming to you to speak about the American Rescue Plan very briefly, cause there's just been a little bit of misinformation and confusion. So I just wanna go over two quick points with you. One will be the timeframe which the funds should be dispersed and what the funds are intended for. Um, from the Department of Treasury, the funds are intended for support in the public health response to COVID-19, replace public sector revenue loss, water and sewer infrastructure, address the negative impacts of COVID-19, so that's response to the economic harms to workers, families, small business, impacted industries, and the public sector, premium pay for essential workers, and specifically broadband infrastructure, excuse me. Um, so that is what the funds are intended for. The next thing is, there's been some confusion as to when and how funds are meant to be spent. Um, the funds can be spent, the timeframe is as follows, I'll put it that way. You have until December 31st, 2024 to claim all of your funds. Funds must be, projects funded through these funds must be completed no later than December 31st, 2026. Two zero two six. There is no rush to make a bad decision. There is no rush to, uh, judgment. This is designed for citizen input because this is a one-time influx of cash. So it is meant to be discussed, haggled, bargained, talked about, oversaw appropriately. So again, just the funds. I know Pontiac's already received its first tranche. It will be claimed by no later than December 31st, 2024. And any project funded simply must be completed by 2026. So as you make these discussions, you're in no risk of losing funds or returning funds or anything like that. There's a significant time to make a great decision. Um, just wanted to clear that up. The information I gave you is through the Congressional Research Fund or the Department of Treasury, so it's all available online. Of course, you can call the Office of Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence, call myself, be happy to send it to you. Thank you for the point of privilege. Thank you all.
Whoa. All right. I believe it, this is Raymond Nelson. 532 Highland Street. Once, twice, okay. Mr. Quincy Stewart.
There is, uh, much to address in this city of ours and for some of us who were born and raised here, especially those of my age cohort, we've been privy to see enormous change over the decades only to devote to this point where in 1971, when I was part of the desegregation of Pontiac schools as a teen, with enormous unrest, bus bombings, the National Guard rolling Humvees down Huron, Judge Damon Keith, Bill Waterman and others as key figures in disrupting the status quo where we are today. No longer under de facto segregation, we now see the very community that these aforementioned figures fought for to now be under de jure segregation among ourselves. To see this grotesque absurdity, the human three-ring circus that we see every week here buttresses the fact that black faces in high places don't necessarily equate to progress. Dr. King and Malcolm X were critical of both the white liberal and also the black politician. Under the guise of a darker hue, many of these elected officials rely on parochialism and the naivety of their electorate to vote and support candidates on name recognition, community pedigree, flash, pizzazz, bling, fake activism and shallow oratory to get elected. And then once in office, run the same game that anybody minus that darker hue would do. Accordingly, if any of us departs that group thinking, begins to analyze anyone or anything beyond the stifling mindset of the ma, of the status quo, we are selling out or not down. To be black is necessary but not sufficient. The Pontiac political game has been played ever since 1973 from Holland on down has been for the most part a calvolcate of ego-driven, unprepared local opportunists who relied on the nullifying parameters of, I am from Pontiac. Yet, when we look at sports teams, we have no qualms about where any player is from as long as they can score. We question someone's loyalty to being black if we deny to adhere to the established narrow local mindset. Yet, these same folks who run that line are nearly always missing in action when battles of substance and perspicacity is required. They cower and run in real fights and opt for safe struggles to look good to the uneducated public in much the same manner that a mediocre boxer does, boxer does to build a big record against even lesser fighters than he. You know, the bum of the month club, as it were. Many of these opportunists have chequered past or have questionable integrity who with little else to play with will default to maintaining the status quo, ineffective as it may be, in hopes that the people have either short or no memories. In conclusion, what I have seen for years is a gaggle of half-rehearsed opportunists and quislings who severely lack integrity and sufficiently insufficient understanding of hit-the-ground-running know-how to provide basic services, let alone effective manage big deals for the betterment of the people. Instead, we see the better rehearsed and better informed out-of-town slicksters ultimately benefit while the people, time and time again, are left only with the noxious fumes of failed campaign promises, continue to watch from the outside and have to lean into survival.
Thank you.
President.
Connecting two questions. I just need a point. You can do it after public comment. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna have to see. Okay, uh, Mr. Leslie Stanley.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Stanley. Um, the last time I came up here, I left a lot out, so I made a few notes. Um, this is my book. You can find it on Amazon. You have to put in "Gell," spelt like hell, H-E-L-L, and it's a true story. So when you go into Amazon, you have to put in that it's a true story. The cost is $20. If you buy it from me, I get the whole $20. But if you buy it off Amazon, I only get $6.51. Yes. But I understand if you don't wanna buy it from me because the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, along with their funkies in the state and the FBI, troll me on Amazon and Facebook. So the best way to get my book is to get it off of Amazon, just so you won't have the same troubles I have. Um, last time I spoke, spoke about women being the most vulnerable in this situation with the Oakland County Sheriff's Department and prostitution because they have children. And I wanted to emphasize that they have children. A lot of these women are addicted and they're on the street. But they have children and they have mothers and fathers, cousins and aunts who take care of their children. One reason why the women don't come forward or the reason why they participate is because the state of Michigan, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, will actually come and take their children from loving homes with their parents, grandparents, aunts, cousin, whoever is taking care of their children and put them into foster care. The state is one of their biggest friends who help them to torture people. Right now, I can't get a registration for my car because I have insurance, but they're asking me to get more because they say I need to have proof in order to verify my registration online. Then I get stopped by the police. And the reason why I know I have insurance is because I don't get a ticket for no insurance because People vs. Maisy makes it possible for the police to know if you have insurance or not on your car. I get a ticket for no proof, not no insurance, but no proof of insurance. And no one is stopping these people, not the state, not Oakland County. Michael Bouchard does not police his police. Oh, that's it?
Yes, dear.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry.
No problem, no problem.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chuck Johnson. And on deck would be Mr. F. Therkel.
Thanks very much and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you in the audience, those of you at home watching by television. What brings me to, uh, the podium tonight is, uh, item number 12 and 13, where, uh, it's requested that the, uh, that the city does a contract agreement with the demolition contractors that bid it the demolition, uh, packet number 17. If we look back and remember, the low-bid contractor, which is the International Demolition Company, uh, they, uh, under numerous occasions fell short of their obligation to the contract and to the people, the citizens of the Pontiac. Um, their price is very, very low. And if you look at the tab sheet, I know you don't have it with you, but I do. He's twice as much lower than the next low bidder. And I can tell which contractors really wanted to work and the ones that really didn't want to work because their prices would vary in certain ways. But if you remember Patrice over on Rayburn, a few years back, this same contractor had that pile of dirt on Rayburn, right in the residential zone. And we had to force him to move that pile of dirt. He just took advantage of the city whatever way he felt like he needed to. But anyways, that's just one little short matter that I feel that this contractor should not be awarded any city work anytime. Cause if we have to chase behind him to make sure that he does his job according to the, the, uh, specifications, the documents and so on and so forth, um, then he doesn't need to work for the city of Pontiac. I know for a fact that his work is second grade work and that's the reason why he bids his work so cheap in Pontiac. He's not allowed to work in the city of Detroit because they're so strenuous about how things should be done. So if you're gonna earn some respect in this town, you better watch out for Chuck Johnson, cause I'm deadly on your case and I'll be watching all the time. His, his work is, is, is insufficient. It's not credible as far as I'm concerned. Our building officials don't even have an opportunity in a lot of cases to go out and look at the hole and/or observe the work that he's doing. So how do we as a city or this government, and Mayor Waterman is not here in the chair, and I like to address her with this, with this thought, because it's up to her to make sure that this contractor and other contractors and any contracts that we give should be done correctly and to the utmost with citizens of Pontiac. I can go on and on and on. I don't have the time. He's already called me. So I'm gonna let it go here.
Thank you, Chuck.
But don't give this guy a contract again.
Thank you. F. Therkel. Okay, and on deck would be, uh, Julia Ruffin.
Good evening, Pontiac. Good evening, Honorable Counsel. I wanted to share a few, um, share, um, information about a program, uh, the THA program. They have funds set aside for Pontiac for water assistance. Um, it's, they're running out of funds, but they still have a couple of dollars. So I wanted to, um, share the information with the audience and with you all here. Um, they will pay, um, for anyone who meets, who meets the qualifications of the federal poverty threshold. Um, monthly income of roughly one-person household, about maybe $1,600 or so. There's a website and I'm gonna put that out there. It's www.thafund.org that people can go to. And there's also a phone number if you are, um, owing something, uh, behind on your bill and you qualify. Um, the phone number is, let's see where I have that number at. 1-800-860- The phone number is, let's see where I have that number at, 1-800-866-8429. Again, it's 1-800-866-8429. I just want to make sure that anybody that needs assistance with their water that they check out this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Pass to Kathy and then Natalia will be next with a public announcement.
We spend a lot of time bellyaching, complaining, griping, whatever adjective you want to put on it. The last few weeks have been particularly rough. We called names. We've named names. This is our city. We live here. What the people outside of this city see is that, what we call, what we say, what we name. It occurred to me this week that instead of complaining about the bus stop, which we all know is a mess, we do something concrete about it. We've got lots of people that are doing civic time three times a week. They go down, they clean up the bus stop. We've got some high school kids who need some time put in. Couple of times a week, they go down, they clean up the bus stop or wherever that happens to be the hot button right now. But whatever needs doing that they can actually do to improve the city and make us look like we actually care, they could be a great idea.
Thank you. Thank you, Pass. Natalia.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Natalia Emerson. I'm here to deliver a public announcement in Spanish on behalf of District Four. We believe it's important to reach our Latinx community and I'm honored to have the opportunity to speak today. Primero, hablaremos del Concilio de Ciudadanos del Distrito Cuatro. El Concilio de Ciudadanos del Distrito Cuatro no se ha reunido en persona desde que la pandemia comenzó. Estas reuniones iniciaran de nuevo cuando la pandemia se acabe. El 17 de septiembre tuvimos el placer de tener a Robert Bass, el presidente del Concilio de Ciudadanos de nuestra comunidad, como un invitado especial en una de estas reuniones. Hablando de nuestras reuniones de concilio virtuales, nos juntamos durante la pandemia para proveer servicios para el distrito cuatro. Unos de estos servicios fueron alimentando familias durante la pandemia, trabajando con las iglesias del distrito cuatro para proveer ropa de cama para las familias, distribuyendo equipos de protección personal en nuestra comunidad. Segundo, hablaremos de la civilidad en el gobierno. Cuando se presentó como candidato para la posición de concejal de la ciudad del distrito cuatro, Randy Carter hizo de los siguientes temas su prioridad: seguridad. El distrito cuatro es el distrito más seguro de la ciudad. Estamos eliminando el deterioro urbano y el graffiti ahora nada más se encuentra en propiedad privada. Nuestros impuestos dependen de las prioridades de nuestro gobierno. Estamos reduciendo la apatía de nuestros constituyentes por medio de juntas virtuales del Concilio de los Ciudadanos, juntas del Concilio de la Ciudad, visitando iglesias y eventos en el distrito, la ciudad, el condado, el estado y en Washington. Queremos tomar un momento para agradecer a algunos miembros de la comunidad en el distrito cuatro. Algunas de estas personas son Dave Coleman for el trabajo que está haciendo en los parques de casas móviles, Theresa Lee for su ayuda en doblando la ropa de cama que estamos donando a la comunidad, Juan Herrera for sus esfuerzos en ayudar a los veteranos, Billy Swizer for el trabajo que está haciendo con la junta de G E R D S, and Johannes Bowles for el trabajo que está llevando a cabo con Take One. También les daré un breve aviso sobre la provisión de asesoría legal gratis para personas de bajos recursos y mayores de 60 años. Lakeshore Legal Aid ofrece ayuda legal en los siguientes casos: casos de familia, casos de vivienda, casos de salario, asuntos al consumidor y casos miscelaños. Por favor visítelos en línea a lakeshorelegalaid.org o llame gratis al 888-783-8190. De nuevo muchas gracias por permitiéndome hablar con ustedes del día de hoy and thank you all again for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I appreciate your attention and consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, next would be Ms. Darlene Clark. Then on deck would be H. Phil Maxi.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone. My name is Darlene Clark. I am a citizen, a resident, born and raised in the city of Pontiac. I understand through numerous years, there has been complaints, there has been, and I'll make this short because I'm on time, there has been multiple complaints and a lot of residents said they have not been heard. I have spoken in many, for over five weeks now with city officials to help try to come to conclusion about the problem. I've heard their side and I heard the residents' side. I know my side and I know other outsider's side. What I'm here to do today, and I hope in my, and the, anyone who hear my words today, I have a petition for every resident in the city of Pontiac to sign. This petition is to express the concerns that you have every week come to this podium spoke about. This petition is to help the city official to seek help, to get things done, to get the, hire the mayor to listen, and we have to get the government to listen. Pontiac does not deserve to get the reputation that we have. Our families before us have paved the way for generations as of today for us to have a home to stay. I need your help to help the city. I'm not speaking on behalf of the city. They did not hire me. I'm not, I'm speaking on behalf of us as residents. I need you to sign this petition so we can take these petitions to the city of Pontiac, put it in the mayor's desk, may it be the present mayor or the future mayor, whoever it may be, to get administration, because they're short of staff, to get the job done. We're living by the names that outsiders have called us. They have called us hoods and they have called us the ghetto. I was not raised by anyone in the ghetto and I'm definitely not from the hood. I'm from the city of Pontiac, which I stand proudly to fight for today.
Thank you very much. H. Phil Maxi and on deck will be Ms. Tamika Ramsey.
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac community at large and governance. I hope you heard what Mr. Johnson was saying. To add to that response, our strategic team had a meeting with the mayor and staff. We asked for a contract compliance officer. We also asked for someone that would deal with the editing of the contracts going out. The mayor oral executive order, we asked for, don't you realize that the dollar don't turn around 13% in this city simply because the contractors are not hired from the city? We asked about emergency. If a sewer backs up, if a tree falls in the road, and I did get a call you, no one but emergency people on the list and the people do not live here. Listen to what he's saying and with our strategic team, I know we're going to push, push, push. It's going to get right. Guess what? Because Mr. Johnson is our advisor. If he don't know after 50 years how to advise us, he should not be here and he is our advisor. Second, let me tell you some code enforcement. You have renters in this town, the violations, as Ms. Miller was saying last week, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars in the city that have not been collected and you want to flip over and go to eviction. Supreme Court says, hey, the monetary is no good, but I am here to tell you, we talked to the number one person in the state of Michigan, the team and I, on Thursday, the number one, along with the state rep, and what was said, there is a process to slow down these evictions. Number one, why the landlords aren't presenting the paper? Guess what? They are not registered. They have no business doing business in this city. Huh? And the people controlling that are not checking. I know two, three or four years, it only had not been checked. I'm saying to you, take this number, 248-762-4953. Young adults, seniors, do not sign another contract with the landlords. They don't present the paperwork for the process and in the seven days you're evicted and they go back and get your brothers, your sisters and your uncles to sign. We've got to stop this, but we are watching diligently. As I said, we met with the top person in the state, no second, no third, no fourth, and along with the state rep, we got our answers, but it takes time to implement. A few good men and women, we have at least six. And in summary, I'm saying, yeah, Mr. Johnson's watching out. He'll continue to advise us. Here's a list of contractors, not contractors, but landlords who are not registered, not all of them, just some of them. How are you going to lease a rent home?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Excuse me for getting excited. Cease and desist that crap.
Thank you. Ms. Tamika Ramsey and on deck would be Ms. Veronica Taylor.
Good evening, everyone. I am here tonight as a resident and a small business owner. My consulting firm, T. Ramsey and Associates, works very hard to help small businesses in the city of Pontiac. People who live here, people who work here, people who both live and work here. And businesses are hurting. They are desperately hurting and I know that, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for talking to us about the Biden bucks, but I was hoping the mayor would be here so that we can hear more about these town halls that need to happen. While we are sitting and talking, businesses are closing, people are losing their only sense of income. People could lose their homes. Like it's a domino effect and so it's really important that we focus on people who are dedicated to not only this community but building wealth for this community and their families. Nick's Corner is hurting financially. Businesses have to decrease their hours because they can't find workers. They can, products, food is going up, the cost is going up and they're trying not to pass those prices on right away to consumers. So what are we doing to assist small businesses? The city of Detroit, the city of Flint are doing things. They are in the community having conversation and giving out money, helping with grants, helping with loans, and right now that's not happening in Pontiac. And so if we want to have this conversation in a year about how our city has gone down because people cannot take care of their families, cannot take care of their buildings, cannot take care of their homes, we need to continue to do what we've been doing and right now that's nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. That's Veronica Taylor and Mel would be last.
Good evening, the city of Pontiac and mayor office and our elected officials. I'm here on the behalf of the Oakland County Prosecuting Attorney's Office and she send you all well greetings. We are about to have Oakland County Prosecuting Attorney Office is about to have a venue where you all can come and see her at Murphy Park on October 16th from the hours of 12 to 4:00 and I'm inviting every resident to come out. I will be bringing back flyers so you all can be aware and be at this event. The prosecuting attorney office, Karen McDonald, has got open things now. We have a new prosecuting attorney that is welcoming you all to come to her office and help get things did so they will not lock you up. Thank you and may God bless you.
Thank you.
My name is Melanie Rutherford and I stay in District One. Beauty is a combination of qualities such as shape, color or form that pleases the senses. Did you know there were four ways you can actually build self-esteem? Number one is verbal acknowledge, to validate, give them strength. Number two is to encourage them, to challenge themselves, to provide guidance. Number three, to tell them that they're wonderful and intelligent. And number four is to actually give them all around support. These are the things that we acknowledge that when you acknowledge this to a young lady, their inner beauty, they start to believe in their inner beauty and then they start to express their outer beauty. It's because of this when in 2018 I started doing an event called Your Vision, Your Voice. It's also the reason why me, along with Jackie Wellens of Herd Clothing Line, Mia Brooks of Luminosity Makeup and Jesse Elliott decided to sponsor seven young ladies in the city of Pontiac homecoming experience. Seven young ladies from the city of Pontiac will receive a homecoming dress from originally made by our Sora Deck Fashions. The dress will be tailor made, the makeup will be done by Ms. Mia Brooks of Luminosity, the hair will be done by Lexi the Hair Diva. All these young ladies have to do is to answer the one question, what is your beautiful? The deadline to enter the contest is actually on Sunday when we'll ask you an offer. And this is for the whole city of Pontiac, not just District One. I think in order to build up a young lady's self-esteem, you have to empower them to remind them that they are beauty and everybody needs to have a great homecoming experience. Again, in order to win the contest, you have to be from the city of Pontiac, that's all. And the first seven girls who answer the question saying, what is their beautiful, will receive a package of $1,000 to remake their homecoming experience. I hope that I inspire the beauty from within so they can eventually inspire the beautiful without. Thank you so much and have a great evening.
Thank you. The president, any further comments?
All right. Mr. Gibbs had a question for the clerk.
Thank you, Council President. A point of privilege, I appreciate that, through the chair to the clerk, in the absence of the mayor this evening and in accord with the practices of counsel for taking potential action on your agenda this evening are four items, items seven, 10, 11, and 22 that deal with an option offer that's been made for the Purdue School at 25 South Sanford. Most of what is on the agenda can be handled at your regular meeting of September 28th, one week from now. I would ask the clerk, if the clerk would permit to recognize me as the mayor's designee for a very limited purpose of simply asking the council to schedule a properly noticed public hearing for the 28th, not to take any other action, not to discuss or determine or receive any of the other items, but it's critical to make the October 1 deadline that's set by the state of Michigan or the Community Housing Network that the public hearing be set for next Tuesday. The only way we can do that is ask this council to have that limited action of suspending the rules for the limited purpose of scheduling the public hearing and for no other purpose. So I would ask through council president to the clerk, it's somewhat abnormal, I recognize. I, as special legal counsel, have been designated the designee to get this done and for that limited purpose alone, council president, I would ask the clerk if he would acknowledge me as the designee for that sole purpose tonight.
Through the president, unfortunately, that's not possible. Per the charter, the mayor would have had to send the communication prior to this meeting to the clerk. It's right in the charter. I'm trying to pull up the exact section of the charter now.
I would just ask that, that from a...
I'm sorry. No. Going by the charter and that is what's been stated and from years past, as sitting as probably one of the longest serving council persons sitting here and working in the council, the mayor was supposed to submit a letter. She did not.
I guess, I guess I'm just, and I completely acknowledge that, counsel, I'm just really trying to save something that is so unbelievably beneficial for the city and it's not anybody's counsel's fault or my fault, but just for this one limited purpose to set that public hearing and then we could consider this. It's not even presuming that it would be adopted, but the only way we can consider it is if the council were to set the public hearing again following the charter that requires a resolution to do so. So that would be my point of privilege and ask, council president, I leave it to the discretion of the council.
Yeah, go ahead. So the section of the charter states, let's see, council attendance is the section 4.104. The mayor and the deputy mayor shall attend all meetings of the council and respond to all questions from council members and citizens.
The mayor and the deputy mayor shall attend all meetings of the council and respond to all questions from council members and citizens, make reports, and present proposals. By letter filed with the city clerk, the mayor or deputy mayor may designate a qualified city administrative officer to attend all meetings of the council and respond to questions from council members and citizens, make reports, and present proposals during the mayor and deputy mayor's temporary absence due to an emergency or disability. And this section was amended in November 2005.
I, I would note that the deputy mayor had prior recognition, but I will acknowledge publicly that this council has not accepted that appointment. So I know that creates a procedural question as well. From what I understand, the ability to act is not contained in the charter, but is, is a separate legal position, so.
Um, when will the mayor be back, um, so we can schedule a, a special meeting to address these items?
We could schedule a public meeting, uh, later this week and still meet the charter requirements for the timing of public notice.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's do that.
Special meeting?
Yes. Let's have a special meeting because I don't want to, uh, the charter was, uh, in 1982, uh, went before I started, so I don't want to change it because I'm here. So, uh, we're going to stick to the charter. Um, but if, uh, the body wants to suspend the rules to vote on a special meeting, we can do that. Uh, you need to give us a date and time though, Mr. Gibbs, so we can give it to the clerk.
I, I know councilwoman Pila often has, uh, scheduling challenges in the afternoon, so I would suggest, um, at 10 a.m. on Friday, no? 10 a.m. on Friday, which would be September, please, 24th, 24th.
Mr. Clerk, Mr. President.
Okay, um, councilwoman Pila and then, uh, attorney sheriff.
I have no conflict during any day of the week, anytime. My only conflict is on Saturday and Sunday. Thank you.
So I, I would recommend 10 a.m. on September 24th, Friday.
So I guess this question would be directed to the clerk. Again, you can't take any formal action, so maybe you guys can unofficially kind of agree on a date and then a special meeting can be called. You cannot call, you cannot suspend the rules.
Okay. Okay, thank you, attorney sheriff.
I, I would agree with that.
We're, we're going to move on with the agenda. Um, so we're at item number two. Uh, reducing the digital divide. Is Mr. Jason Dixon here? Okay. Uh, not there. Okay, we'll move to item number five. There's, uh, Mr. Juan here. Okay. We're going, not seeing him. We're going to move on, uh, to item number seven.
Uh, thank you, council president, Matthew Gibbs, special legal counsel. Item seven deals with the ordinance regarding the Purdue School, um, acknowledging that the first reading cannot be, uh, held, uh, this evening. Just a brief description that was included in your packet for the benefit of the public. This item, items 10, 11, and 22 all deal with the same, um, opportunity. Uh, at the discretion of, uh, the council president, the council, um, Mr. CJ Felton from Community Housing Network is present, uh, tonight. He did include a presentation in your packet. If you'd like him to provide that presentation tonight, he can. Um, and we'd be more than happy to, to cede this, this podium position. I'm waving him over. Uh, do that. As he's coming over, council president for your council, uh, the ordinance that would support the Purdue Place project in general, Purdue School was acquired by the city as a result of the global settlement with Charles Stevens. Uh, there was a value placed upon the school that was not set by appraisal, but was set by, uh, the underlying, uh, court documents and other things of the value of $600,000. The Community Housing Network has offered to the city to come and, uh, replace that $600,000 to the city by purchasing the Purdue School. The school right now, uh, is in severe disrepair, so much so that we have advised very limited and restricted in, entry because of mold and other, um, contaminants and environmental conditions. It is a complete teardown of the structure. Uh, they have offered to provide that compensation, uh, to the city. Uh, as with all the community housing networks projects in the city, they will be pursuing a very quality project, 76 units, as Mr. Felton will describe. That would accompany financing from MISTHA, which includes a payment and a little taxes request to the city. Item number seven on your agenda would be the ordinance that covers that as is required under law, uh, going forward. Uh, the ordinance describes the same language as you have adopted in the past. Uh, this particular pilot would be in accord with the financing required for the project, uh, to build this out. Uh, it would be a lengthy, uh, pilot, uh, 47 years. 50 years are permitted under the statute. Uh, we did recently approve, um, a pilot of 40 years, uh, the Carriage Circle pilot is of 40 years. So it's not unprecedented to look at what would be required to put the financing together for a project of this, uh, extent and, and type. Uh, so that ordinance is before you. Uh, it would require a first reading and a second reading. Uh, the adoption of that ordinance is not critical to the timeline that we just discussed, and so the holding of a first reading can wait until, uh, next week. But I'd like to see the microphone and have Mr. Felton describe the project for you and the public a little more fully. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. My name is CJ Felton. I'm director of real estate development at Community Housing Network. It's good to see many of you again. It's been a long time since I've been here at council. First of all, I want to thank both, uh, you all and the city for trying to take some extraordinary measures to consider, uh, items over the, this, tonight, which I understand we're, we're not going to get there on several of these things tonight, but to consider those over the next two meetings to enable us to, uh, with your approval, to apply for funding a week from Friday on the first. In your packet, you've got a 12-page presentation that we put together on the Purdue Place development. Just to give you a little bit of background on this, we've looked at this building several times going back to 2013 and have long wanted to do something with it. Uh, the Stevens ended up with control of it for a while. When we learned that the city, uh, had become the owner, we became very interested again. We started having conversations in the spring with the city and, uh, started to put our plans together for what we wanted to do, uh, which has brought us to this point tonight. The development will be known as Purdue Place. It involves, uh, creating 76 units of rental housing on the site of the Purdue School. Be one, two-bedroom and one, two, and three-bedroom units with a large community building in the center of the development that will provide activity space for both residents and for the surrounding community based on availability. We think that that's a nice amenity for that, uh, for that neighborhood. It doesn't exist nearby right now. The, unfortunately, and we've had several people through the building, I think anybody that's familiar with that, um, it's, it's been sitting vacant for quite a while. And, um, aging vacant school buildings don't do well. Uh, we had architects, engineers, environmental people, and a general contractor through, and it was determined that the building could not be saved. Um, which we don't like that. I, I personally don't like to see things end up in the landfill. Um, if we can repurpose some of our community assets, it's always a beautiful thing, but the cost far exceeds what is reasonable to spend to keep the building. This will represent an approximate, oh, nearly $26 million investment in the city if approved by, by you and we're able to obtain, obtain funding from MISTHA. You have a site plan, um, on there, which was presented at the nine, eight meeting of the planning commission. We've got a preliminary approval on that. And, uh, there are several things that, uh, we need to work with Mr. Guffsterson on, but, um, planning commission gave us that approval. And, and I might say, I think they were very enthusiastic about plans. You'll see in here, we've got some early renderings of what the buildings will look like from the street view. Um, there will be, and these things are oftentimes in flux at this part of the development, but there are uh, two, there's seven buildings total plus the community building, two different configurations. There's a 12-unit configuration, an eight-unit configuration, um, all two stories with balconies on the second level. Um, patio is on the first floor, very attractive, will combine, um, and you've got some pictures of some other things that we've done in your packet. But, uh, the way we finish these is a combination of vinyl siding, uh, wood, and some cultured stone around the bottom. They look very attractive, uh, I think would be a really nice addition to that neighborhood. Community building, um, is, it's a 4,000-plus square foot building. Be identical to one that we have just finished over in East Point at, uh, a new development that is nearly complete over there. We'll have leasing, our leasing management office will be there. We've got service offices and then a very large space to be able to hold, uh, resident gatherings, community gatherings. Um, some of our developments, we've had consistent program from the YMCA, uh, very, uh, very beneficial to the entire community. But it looks like we're, are we going through our, there we go. For those of you in the audience. So very quickly, I've given you four examples of some of our previous work. The first one is our Jefferson Oaks development in Oak Park, which is our largest development to date. That was an adaptive reuse of the Thomas Jefferson School. We created 21 and two-bedroom apartments in the school and then an additional 40 townhome units on the rest of the site. Uh, again, we've got a large community room there. We finished that in the end of 2018. It's been a very successful development to date. Second one is, uh, the one that I just told you about in East Point. It's called Aaron Park. That one was a little unique for us. It features 26 duplex buildings for a total of 52 units, uh, again, with that great big community building in it. And that one is scheduled to be complete, uh, about a month from today. We've also got our Grafton Townhomes development, again, in East Point. Uh, that is 48 units, um, in seven separate buildings, 48 townhome units, two and three bedrooms. The look of that development would be actually pretty similar to what we're proposing for Purdue Place. And then many of you are probably familiar with the work that we've done in Unity Park, our Unity Park Rentals development. That's 79 single-family homes, um, combination of one, two, three, and four bedrooms. We finished our first phase in 2015. We are finishing phase five here in the next few months. Um, and that's been a, a great addition to Unity Park. I think if you all have been through that neighborhood over the last decade, uh, you may remember what it used to be like. There are literally nearly any, there are almost no more vacant lots in that, in that whole neighborhood. Uh, it's been totally transformed due to the work that we've been able to do, but not only that, uh, Lighthouse has done work in their Habitat, has done work in their adventure. Olsa's Housing Division has done work. So we've all, we've all worked together to upgrade that neighborhood. Okay, the development timeline, that'll be a couple pages back or further down. Again, we talked about this a couple minutes ago. We're hopeful of applying to the state on October 1st. The mechanism is actually two different types of tax credit funding. I don't want to get too far into the, the financial details on that, but it's part of the reason why we need the 45-year pilot because one mechanism on the funding requires the same, uh, pilot length that Carriage Circle had, which is the 40-year pilot. The application is approved, uh, which we had, would anticipate probably early February of next year. We'd begin work immediately to close the financing. Demolition of the school could begin as early as September of 2022. Uh, site work and constru, and construction shortly thereafter, uh, with construction and lease, full lease up anticipated by the end of 2023. I did put a next step slide in here. Introduce, discuss, and seek approval of pilot ordinance and development agreement. Obviously, that's going to get, uh, pushed back to next week. Introduce, discuss, and seek option agreement approval. We'll see where we end up with that. And then we also did have, uh, at the same planning commission meeting on September 8th, we got a conditional, I should say contingent rezoning from planning commission, needs to be rezoned to multifamily to be able to do what we intend to do. And that item is, was, it was going to be on the agenda tonight, and we can do that next week. That one is not, that's not critical at all tonight. So with that, is there any questions at all from council?
Yes.
Go ahead, councilwoman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Felton. Uh, when you speak about the Unity Park, I was a part of that as well as, um, President Williams, and you did some fine work there. I guess to my concern is, uh, how much money, you know, you all are planning with me. You spent $600,000 on that building and you're only talking about $5,000. That, that doesn't sit well with me. Also, the 45 years does not sit well with me. When you speak on, uh, Carriage, Carriage, um, Circle, they did give some of their funding money back. Um, so I, I need to, you need to make me understand why you need 45 years.
Well, we need at least four. Um, the, the one portion of the financing cannot be done without a 40-year pilot. The, the other thing that we will do is we're going to commit to the state when we apply to keep these units affordable for 45 years. And so really the two go hand in hand. And the reason you see in the pilot request 47 years is because of that timeline I told you where it's going to take, uh, some time to hear back from the state, close the financing, construction, and, and so forth. And the simple, I, I'll just be completely transparent with you. We can't do this without a pilot. Both on the, the funding mechanism side and also on the, um, making it financially feasible. Uh, the way these things work, there's literally no cash flow. Um, we're nonprofit developer. We don't, you know, we don't do this to make money. We do it because we want to make the world a better place and they don't make money and it, it can't be done without the pilot.
You know, it's something that we always say, why did this come to us at the last minute? Is this something that you have not been working on prior to now? Now we only have two weeks to digest this and try to move forward. You say you have to have this information by October the 1st. We're getting it at the end of September?
We, we started the process in May. And for a variety of reasons, it's taken this long to get here today.
Okay. I'm gonna let somebody else speak and, uh, I, I'll probably come back to you, but that's unfortunate that you have been working on this since May and we get it in September.
We would have liked to have had more time too. It gets very stressful.
I'm sure.
Councilwoman Waterman, just to the developers, uh, I guess, uh, to back him up just in general, uh, they did come and reach out to me. The city at the time told them not to contact the council person for that district and he reached out to me individually. So I just want to let you know as the practice of the city, they've been telling people not to contact council people about issues that happen in their district. So just want to give them some credit, uh, on there because they did try to bring it to me as early as possible, but, uh, the way that this administration has been rolling, it's not good. So, uh, anybody else have questions?
Council president?
Yes.
Are you going to take the other items individually, like the agreement and are you discussing that or are you waiting till next week or should I address it now?
Yeah, you can address all the questions now because the thing is, if we're Yeah, you can address all the questions now, because the thing is, if we're going to schedule any kind of meeting going forward, I think my colleagues need to know exactly what's in the whole kitty kaboodle.
So again, just some concerns that I just want to make council aware of. As you know, this is a two-year option, and so you'd be keeping this open for two years. And again, my question goes back to the two deposits, the earnest money deposit. And again, the language that's reflected, it's only contingent upon you getting the financing. So is that correct? Because it was not changed. So it's basically, the way it's written in here, it basically says that the option payment will become non-refundable when you receive the 42 tax credits. And the other one is basically the same thing, when you receive the credits. Other than that, the city does not get the $15,000.
We had agreed to a modification, basically, after the conversation we had.
It hasn't been changed.
To do the earlier of receiving the reservation, or May 15th of 2022, to allow both of those deposits to be non-refunded. We're, we're completely fine with that.
Okay. Only, again, I'm only bringing this to council's attention, because it's a two-year option, and basically, if they don't receive the credits, the way it's written now, you don't receive anything. So just making you aware of that. And then in the memorandum with the security, so that would be number three, the maintenance and liability. It's my understanding, obviously, you'll be responsible for all maintenance in the process, and it says we'll assume liability for the property. But really, that's just the maintenance, because in the contract, the option contract itself, it says maintenance. It can't be the actual liability because of the fact you can't assume liability. Is that correct?
If, if I could, the intent of it is to transfer all the maintenance responsibilities so that the city would not have an ongoing obligation there. And the liability for the property, which would be properly insured by Community Housing Network, if there was an incident of liability on a property, it would first run through the liability insurance provided by CHN. What we're trying to do is, because of the length of the option needing to be two years, and the reason it's two years is the first round of the funding approvals would happen between February and April of next year. Then, once they're approved with the tax credits, there is a length of time that they need now to go and close that tax credit-based financing, which would push them, presumably they would close if everything goes appropriately by the end of 2022. The extra time on the option into the spring of 2023 is in the event that they need to reapply for those tax credits on April 1st. So they baked in a cautionary period at the end of the option, in the event that that somehow gets deferred. So that they don't succeed in the October application, they would pursue the April application. If they were to do that, the money does become non-refundable, the first money becomes non-refundable going forward. So that's the reason of the length of the option. If everything goes appropriately, they would close and start demolition in the fall of 2022. That's the way it's written.
But if you can point out in the option agreement where it says about the other liability, and not just the, in terms of the length, the maintenance? Because it doesn't say that they will basically have any type of insurance and be the insurer.
We, for, for, yeah, and, and in turn, sure, we can, I'm sure, Mr. Felton, we can include a more detailed, it's a standard clause in an option agreement of this nature, where we can include some additional language prior to it being finally considered valid counsel.
And I do want to make sure that we can insure property that we don't own.
That's, that's my thought. I didn't think that you could.
I'm not an insurance person, but we'll, we can look into that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I might add, just to, when Matt was talking about the timing, it, it does require patience from a seller. But I think we recognize that, which is why we were willing to offer the full $600,000. I think in the memorandum, it, it is not worth, it is not worth $600,000 on the market, but we are able to pay $600,000 for it because of the funding mechanism that we've got. And I think that that was an important number to the city.
Anybody else have questions?
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, this came up in that grand deal, grand bargain, I voted no on it. When, when the city went to purchase that, that piece of property, I'll call it a piece of crap first, I did ask for environmental board, and it wasn't delighted. But in 2013, I did physically go inside that building and start afghan, and I understand how dilapidated it is. I know I had blackmail, I had water, water to the first floor. It has three fuel oil tanks buried 45 feet in the back, there are three 10,000 gallon fill, because I have to, I have a sightseeing. It didn't make sense for the city to even get in, get into that deal, even for collateral, and then to turn back, and now all of a sudden, it's a, it's a, it's a little minor deal that we will exchange it back for the same thing that we picked it up for. Somewhere, buyer beware, because the property is contaminated. So either the city's going to take the risk, I mean, it looked like to me, for rough guess, it would take $8 million just demo a property before you could do anything else, before you even dig into China. I could, I just couldn't see any reason why the city would even want to get involved with that unless, unless for some, some mental disabilities, the city needed that for collateral in order to make the grand deal work. But, Mr. President, that's all, I'm, I'm done with that. I won't kill it anymore.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
Councilwoman Felton?
Okay. I, I guess, Mr. Felton, what is the benefit to the city of having this project?
I think there's, I think there's, well, there's two significant ones. One, that is a terribly blighted property right now, that something needs to be done with it. And I don't think anybody has yet to bring an idea, other than what we've brought, that is something that turns a problem into an opportunity. Second thing is that, for those of you that are familiar with that area north of Auburn, that's, that is a neighborhood that needs something to kickstart it. That, that part of the community still has a lot of vacant lots. It's, there's blight. If you drive through there, it's, it's a neighborhood that looks a lot like the Unity Park neighborhood looked like a decade ago, and I think that's a benefit to the city as well. I think the community building there is a benefit to that whole neighborhood, where people have an opportunity where they can gather, they can, you can do bridge club, you could do any kind of, you could do your district meetings there, any number of different things could be done there. And it also gets, it gets a property, a non-revenue-producing property on the tax roll again, as well.
Okay. Anybody else have questions, Mr. Felton? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Felton. We're going to move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Item number eight, communication from the city clerk informing the city council that Robert S. Hirth Jr. of Kirk, Who, Long, and what's that?
Father, lamenti.
PLC is, is resigned as a professional expert legal advisor for the city clerk. I'll let you take that, Mr. Clerk.
So that simply can be received on September 1st for Mr. Who's contract. He had to give a 30-day notice, so his resignation is effective September 30th, 2021. Want to move to, this relates to item nine.
Okay. We'll go to item number nine.
So since Mr. Who's resignation is effective September 30th, I would need another legal compliance advisor to complete the review of the Walton Boulevard Provisioning Center applications. We've completed the review of Caesar Chavez Downtown, the non-overlay, and the only district left is Walton. Robert Charles Davis of Davis Listman, Listman, is a highly skilled attorney. He has drafted on both the Medical and Recreational Marijuana Ordinance in Oxford, and he does not have any conflicts. So I guess if the council can consider this next week.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the clerk? Okay. We're going to move on to item number 12. Resolution to approve a contract between the city and Rightway Remediation LLC to provide asbestos abatement service for the community development block grant clearance and demolition of batch 17 properties not to exceed $93,000. Who from administration is presenting? Okay. Seeing nobody, we're going to move on to item number 13. Resolution to approve a contract between the city and International Construction to provide demolition services for CDBG clearance and demolition of batch 17 not to exceed $175,000. Who from administration is presenting? Okay. We're going to move on to item number 14. Resolution to approve an agreement between the city and asphalt specialists, Inc., for $2,96,286 and zero cents for 2021 local street improvement project.
Yeah, Mr. President, this is a, a resolution that I'm just bringing back. We, it's been on the agenda two weeks ago, and it was discussed, it's a project that was bid out, and the low bid was received, and that's by, you know, the, the low bidder was ASI Asphalt Specialists Incorporated, based in Pontiac, and that is who we're recommending award to. This project includes multiple local streets, including Cherry Hill, Starlight, Fairmount, Gamrel, Bynon, Grandville, Omar, Guernada, as well as West Columbia. And also, there's a section of repair on Woodward and some short segments of a repair on other local streets.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Sari? Okay. Seeing that, we're going to move on to item number 15. Resolution to support an application for transportation alternative program grant through Michigan Department of Transportation for the Lesby Avenue over Clinton River Bridge Superstructure Capital Prevention Maintenance.
Yeah, so we are applying for a transportation alternatives program grant from, through the Michigan Department of Transportation for the Lesby Avenue Bridge over Clinton River. That bridge, unfortunately, we, we can't go after other bridge funding sources, because the bridge does not have a lot of traffic on it. Unfortunately, it's in, it's in poor condition, but we're not able to prepare a suitable application for critical bridge funding or local bridge funding through MDS. This is, the TAP grant is something that we can utilize, because this is a historic bridge. And so in order to preserve the historic nature of the bridge, we can apply for TAP grant funding, and we're requesting approval from council to proceed with that application.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to item number 16, and we just finally got communication that speaks to that. So we'll go to the item number 17. Resolution to approve $988,000 contract amendment with the Oakland County Sheriff to provide funding for seven additional deputy sheriffs to the city's current contracting staffing
Good evening, council. So item number 17, as you all may recall, council approved some additional funding in the current fiscal year's budget to provide some additional deputies. And so that money was, was appropriated and, and approved by council and is currently in the budget. This was additional funding on top of what had been previously contracted with the Oakland County Sheriff. So this amendment is to implement the, the additional sheriffs that was approved by council via the current fiscal year budget. So this is simply the amendment that allows for the additional seven deputies to be a part of what was planned for with the current fiscal year budget.
Okay. Item number 18.
Item number 18, the city for the last several years has been part of a auto theft prevention task force, and as a customary part of that, the city is a subrecipient of a grant from the state. It's been done for the last several years, and this is the request to allow for the county to be the direct granting, the city to act as a subrecipient for the grant, for this auto, auto theft prevention task force that the city's been a part of for the last eight years, I believe.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Carrington? Okay. Item number 19. Resolution to approve hazard pay for essential and non-essential workers.
Yes. Item number 19 is the hazard pay that was submitted last week, or, or it was, it was submitted, drafted a couple weeks ago. We did have one meeting in front of the council's finance subcommittee. We, we met again today, where we made, the administration provided for certain changes that was discussed at the prior meeting. Per this afternoon's meeting, we have, and have made some additional changes as directed by council, and will be submitting those, namely, is council's direction that the funds not come from the American Rescue Plan. Council's direction is to have these funds come from the general fund and the other respective, respective funds. Additionally, in terms of the structure of the payments, more specifically, they will be at a rate of $2,000 for anyone that was on staff as of March of 2020. Anyone hired after that date will be prorated from their date of hire through the end of June.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Actually, I'm sorry, couldn't get a chance to, um, talk with Mr. Johnson. Actually, I have correspondence from Mr. Johnson on Tuesday, September 7th. We had a conversation, and we went back and discovered that the CARES I and CARES II also had money for the essential workers. Why weren't they included in, in those funding?
I'm not exactly sure. I wasn't here at the time. I'm not exactly sure specifically of what CARES Act funding that the city of Pontiac has received. I know that there were some CARES Act money that was provided through the state for local governments to reimburse for public safety. But I, I would need to take a more detailed look at the, the particular funding that came directly to the city of Pontiac for the CARES Act, because some of those funds that, that the city has received to date through the CARES Act has been for, primarily for public safety reimbursement costs that the city's incurred.
Reason I ask, because I asked for it during the budget hearing, and there was no COVID or CARES Act money within the budget that we were going through. I mean, we're just some, I mean, for lack of a better word, frackle and aquabool when I looked at it. Because the city did receive money, and it wasn't allocated, and we couldn't allocate it within the budget, because it, it didn't have a placeholder. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Just to clarify, we were in the finance subcommittee chaired by Councilwoman Waterman today, and one of the reasons that we brought up to use it out of the general fund and not out of the AARP money is because this council restricted that money. And so any uncapping of that before January, I'm just not in agreement with, especially when we have plenty of general fund money that could be used to make these people whole. Okay. Anybody else have questions for Mr. Carrington? Okay. Well, this brings us to item number 20, which is a resolution regarding acceptance of a quick claim deed for Rasher Properties LLC for its half of a vacated portion of Hollywood Street.
Good after, good evening, Council President George Contis from the city attorney's office. As my materials indicate in the memorandum provided to you in your packet, this portion of Hollywood Street between Mansfield Avenue and West Kennet Road was vacated by council resolution back in December of 1984. I apologize, I have a typo. It says December of '85 in my memo, but it's actually December of 1984. So as a result, the eastern half of that portion of Hollywood Avenue went to General Motors, and the western half went to the owner directly on the
Motors, and the western half went to the owner directly on the opposite side, western half of Hollywood Avenue, Hollywood Street between Mansfield and St. Louis, I'm sorry, between Mansfield and West Kennet. Mr. Rick Stablocke, the chief tax officer and director of operations for the Racer Trust, which is the entity which was created as a result of the GM bankruptcy, and all surplus GM properties which were not going to be used in its post-bankruptcy operations were transferred into the trust. And so the Racer Trust now owns the property to the east of Hollywood Avenue, Hollywood Street. They were, they approached Councilwoman Mary Pedala earlier this year and wanted to know whether the city would be interested in taking title back to the west half of Hollywood Street as part of its development or getting rid of the properties. And though they're, they're under no obligation to tell us, it's evident that they're either planning to sell the property or lease the property, and the prospective purchaser or prospective tenant does not want the liability to be associated with owning half of the street. So to that end, they are asking whether the city would be inclined and interested to accept title back to that originally vacated portion of Hollywood Street. Now, the question remains whether it's a good idea for the city, except for this council to make that determination, but the fact remains, it's, you're acquiring a liability, but however, the street has never been closed. The city has, I, I believe the city still through DPW plows and maintains that portion of Hollywood Street. But from a legal perspective, it becomes an obligation for the city if it's, if, if the city were to accept and the council were to approve receipt of a quick claim deed for that property at some point.
So, Mr. Kontis, since 1984, the city has been taking and maintaining the street that belonged to General Motors and now to Racer Trust, and they haven't given the city a dime on it?
That is my understanding, Council President.
Okay. All right. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. Anybody have questions or comments?
No, Mr. President, the only question I would have, and I'm not, not a very good friend with Racer Trust, except all the property in the city of Pontiac was donated to General Motors. So therefore, when General Motors left the property, then all the property legally should have came back to the city of Pontiac, because General Motors did not pay taxes. Only the employees that worked for General Motors paid taxes to the city if they worked here or lived here. I couldn't see how Racer got it that involved with a trust when the legal obligation would have been the property, since real estate is hard to come by, it should have all came back to the city, as city property, because it was gifted to General Motors, when General Motors left, it should have been gifted right back to the city.
I completely understand your position pro tem, you know, however, under the bankruptcy rules, bankruptcy rules applied, and the bankruptcy court did this. I don't, I don't believe the city had any, again, I wasn't participating in the bankruptcy settlement at the time, but bankruptcy rule made this determination and ordered the transfer of the property to the trust, and that's where we are today. Fortunately or unfortunately, as the case may be.
You know, ideally that would have been, so let's make a deal for $1.
Okay. Councilwoman Waterman?
Oh, my goodness. It's never a dull moment. I'm asking your opinion, Mr. Kontis, since you're the expert here. I mean, why should we take on a liability?
Unless you could take title to the other half of Hollywood Street, and it became, the entire street became the city's again, I don't see why you would or why you should.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Pedala, this is your district.
District, and I turned it over to the city attorneys. Thank you.
Okay. We do have a representative for Racer Trust, but they came all this way in the rain, I would allow the opportunity for them to speak if they like to.
Good evening, I'm Patricia Spitzley, Director of Governor Affairs for the Racer Trust. First of all, when the trust, the trust was formed after, as a result of the settlement of the bankruptcy. So, you know, what, what properties we got or what properties we didn't get, the trust we reformed after GM put their properties in the bankruptcy and on the bankruptcy table. When they reformed as new GM, they left a significant footprint on the bankruptcy table, and those properties were, that, that particular site was part of that. And so it wasn't something that the Racer Trust had any input in. We reformed to become the repository of those properties that General Motors left on the bankruptcy table, approximately 315 individual pieces of property across 14 states. So three quarters of those properties have their own distinct environmental budget, and our mission is to remediate those to industrial standards and then reposition them for redevelopment, sale, and job growth. And so in the city of Pontiac, we've had Northern Shore Mortgage was a previous Racer Trust property, All Construction is a previous Racer Trust property, and One Concourse is a previous Racer Trust property. We work really closely with the city and with our, our council folks to, you know, get the redevelopment and the redevelopment vision for the community, and that's how we, we monitor and market the property. As for this, this was something that, you know, we, we found that we were just as surprised as, as the city that we owned a portion of the, of the street. It's happened across our portfolio where we find out we own property or we don't own property, that GM, whether it was donated or they, they bought it as part of a settlement. And so, you know, what we are doing is we don't need to own, we don't need to own a street, and so we brought it to the city to see if they wanted to take control. It's true that it's been, you know, it's been maintained and it's been, the snow's been cleared by the city. We just realized that we owned a portion of it. It's my understanding that you guys are also in discussions with the owner of the other side of the street so that you can maintain total control of the road.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Racer Trust? Okay. All right. We're going to move on to item number 21.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I do have a question for the city attorney.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilwoman Pedala.
George, that's the first time I heard that we're in conversation with Ms. Rollins.
It's news to me too, Councilwoman Pedala.
Okay. Well, I believe I just heard that the city was in conversation with her.
Well, it was my understanding, so maybe I misspoke, but it was my understanding that...
I think you misspoke.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pedala, I, I just spoke to my partner, Attorney Chubb, and he indicated that he is not aware of any such discussions with the, with the neighbor to the west.
I didn't think so. I would like Mr., Mr. Chubb, I would like a response from the mayor. Is she in conversation with her, with Ms. Rollins without us knowing about it?
I'm going to, I'm going to step in and say that was, that was my, that, I may have misspoke, so I don't want to get anybody in, in trouble or, or doing it.
Thank you. We're moving on to item number 21, which is a status update on the medical marijuana caregiver ordinance. Anybody else from, Marco Mullins here to present on it?
Good evening, Council President.
Well, we'll, we'll see that as a...
City council did not pass a resolution on July 6th, 2021 to ask for that ordinance.
Item number 22.
It is going to the planning commission on October 8th.
All right. The meeting is adjourned at 7:39.